Thank you all for coming. If I could ask Pastor Mark Macdow from the Willow View United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation.
If you would, please bow with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day with cooler temperatures on the way. Thanks for the good health that allows each of us to be present here tonight. We realize every day there's a special gift from you. We pray for our staff and students who are currently suffering with health concerns. You are the great physician. Bring complete healing in your time and your way. Protect us all from long-term illness. We thank you for our superintendent, Darryl Floyd, and the faithful members of our school board, Matt Sampson, Kyle Whitehead, Joe Blackwood, Matt Lowman, Chad Mance, Frank Nelson, Toy Turnbow, and Colonel Paul Miller. We also thank you for parents who volunteer and support our schools and teachers, as well as their own children's academic pursuits. Lord, may you bless, support, and encourage our teachers and staff during these continuing, challenging times. Help them to persevere with integrity, effectiveness, and hopefulness. Thanks for entrusting us with the ability to learn and reason, giving us the opportunity to make helpful and wise decisions. May we all grow in the truths and principles of your holy word as we become lifelong learners. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. With that, call the meeting to order. Let the record show, all members are present excluding Joe Blackwood and Frank Nelson. Presentations.
I love the month of September because we get to have our students come back as spotlight students. So, our spotlight student tonight is from Monroe Elementary School, and I'm going to let Mr. Allen introduce them and tell us a little bit about them.
It's good to have Alyssa Brooks with me today. She's a wonderful representation of what we look for in our kids and behavior and just the resiliency she shows, and just super proud of her and glad to be able to introduce her to you guys.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So, first off, I would like to speak about my school. First thing I would like to say, I would love to thank all the wonderful teachers and especially my wonderful, I'm sorry, I have to cough there, and my wonderful principal that make me feel so welcome and open at my school. And I love that they care so much about my education. They're so open-minded and they always help me with questions I need during class. And that's all I really prepared.
All right, well, thank you very much. We have a certificate for you there. Thank you very much. And let's get a picture. Anybody else would like to get a picture, come on down? All right, let's get one more. All right, good job. Thanks for coming tonight.
May you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
All right.
Do you see it? Okay, done. Order, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march.
And our spotlight student at the secondary level, Mr. Rob Mills, is going to introduce our Waller Eagle student.
Thanks for having us. I want to introduce to you a student at Waller Middle School. He's been here, this is his third year here, correct? Third year here. Julian Jenkins. He excels in academics, excels in athletics, and also excels in the arts. Involved in all three. And he just happens to be our student council president. And at the beginning of this year, I was thinking about our school and things that we needed to do, and I reached out to him and said, hey, will you make us a video just challenging our students? And boom, in about two or three days, he had a video ready and had some music to it. A very creative young man and a very good leader for our school. So, I'll let him speak.
Hello and good evening. I am Julian Jenkins, an eighth grader from Waller Middle School. I'm the student council president. Some of the activities I participate in at school are student council, outdoor education, and sports. The sort, the sports I play are basketball and baseball. I'm currently only in outdoor education and student council, while my basketball season starts in November and my baseball season starts in March. One of the community activities I am involved in is I attend a manual Enid with my family on Sundays. I also enjoy volunteering in the community with my traveling basketball team. Some of my hobbies outside of school are playing sports and video games. I also like hanging out with my friends and riding our bikes around the neighborhood. In the summer, I especially love swimming and going to water parks with my friends and family. I am most proud that no matter what obstacles life has thrown my way, I've continued to choose to rise above. Life is full of ups and downs, but in the end, it's all a choice, and I choose kindness and positivity. Even though through the last year, through the last year and a half of quarantine and distance learning, Waller has continued to stay strong and make our education a priority. We have continued to soar like eagles.
All right, good job. Anybody else want to get a picture? All right, thanks for coming. Good job.
The last group of individuals we'd like to recognize tonight are our four Enid police officers. We are very fortunate that all four of our Enid Public Schools' police officers have received their CLEET training, so I'm going to let Mr. Jason Priest tell us a little bit more.
All right, you guys come on down with the chief priest.
I never really thought that I would be the old-timer in the room, but I know. I went through the CLEET Academy and I graduated in August of 2000. My CLEET number is five numbers long. I think all of theirs is six numbers. But I started here in January of '20. We had three campus police officers. We're now fully staffed with four. Officer Lamway graduated from the State of Oklahoma CLEET Academy September 7th. So, now all four of us are State of Oklahoma CLEET certified law enforcement officers. When I got here, the longest-tenured one was Officer Greg Pavlik. Officer Brian Rio started when I started, and then Officer Lamway. They've all worked very hard. The CLEET Academy now, when I went through, was seven and a half weeks long. It's now 16 weeks. When I went through, it was in Oklahoma City, so it was a pretty quick drive. Now, it's in Ada. So, for them to complete that is, you know, it's a monumental task because you're away from your family. The family takes a lot of the burden, too, so I had it easy. I was 22 and no family in seven and a half weeks. So, I would, I would say give it up to them for what they've accomplished in the last few years.
That's great.
And thank you for recognizing us.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Well, we've had a goal for several years to be fully staffed with four campus police officers that are fully CLEET certified, and now here we are. And you see all four of them here with us tonight. So, thank you, guys, for taking the time, effort, and energy to get all of that work done to become fully CLEET certified, and we appreciate what you do for the district. Thanks for coming tonight. Good job.
All right, which brings us to audience to visitors, which we do have two. Before we go any farther, I'm going to read over our regulations for audience to visitors real quick. Any individual wishing to address the Board of Education must submit a request to the Board at least five minutes prior to the start of the meeting. A board clerk shall ask all visitors to list their name in the visitor's registration. The president of the Board shall recognize the speakers in the order in which they request, which they are requested and received, and they must adhere to the time limits established by the Board. Specifically, the president may require all proponents of one side of an issue to elect one spokesman. Without a special permission, no person may speak longer than five minutes or more than once during the audience-to-visitors portion of the meeting. Board members may not ask questions of the speaker. However, the board members and administration staff cannot respond to questions. Proper questions from members of the public may be referred to the superintendent for later report to the Board. Board will not, in most instances, be able to vote on matters brought forward to the public during the audience-to-visitors. Members of public shall not be recognized while the Board is conducting its official business. The Board shall not hear personal complaints unless the proper administrative procedures, concerns, complaints have been followed. The Board will not tolerate personal attacks on members of the Board or the administrative staff. The use of profanity is prohibited. Under unusual circumstances, the president may recognize individuals who have previously requested to address the Board. With that, Ms. Sharon Dot-Dotty, Doty, Doty?
Doty. Doty, excuse me. Second try, yeah. Good shot there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sharon Doty, and I happen to be the vice chair of the Martin Luther King Holiday Commission, and a couple of the other commission members are with me tonight. We're here tonight to really encourage you to actively promote the poetry poster and letter competition that we will be sending a letter to the schools and to the pastors and to everybody we can get it to, for students to begin to engage in this conversation. We've taken as our charge a quote from Martin Luther King that I'm going to, I'm going to read so I get it accurate. Judge a man not by the color of his skin, but by the content of his character. And last year, we created a theme and a whole idea about how we would really promote this throughout the community in a number of unique ways, and then COVID decided otherwise for us. So, we weren't able to pursue this. We have taken that theme to this year, and the theme of our, our program is "We Are America." And our intention is to engage students at all levels, whether they're teachers, are participating or not, their parents can assist them with this. We have a special provisions in our program for those with special needs. All we require is that they be on the back of it, someone write that to us, that this is a special need student, so that that's taken into consideration during the judging process. We're asking also something different of our high school students this year, junior high and high school students, and that is, they can write poetry, of course, that is one of the places, but if they're, in the past, they've been asked to write an essay. And due to a conversation with some of the language arts teachers in Tulsa Public School, or in Enid Public Schools, we actually changed that this year, and we're asking them to learn to write a letter. An informative letter, not only a letter that educate, that speaks about, a letter to Martin Luther King, that speaks about how they see his dream coming to life or not in our community, and for each of the things they share that they think are not up to snuff, we're asking them to take one of them and give us a solution. Begin to create what's next. You know, we do an awful lot of pointing. That's wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong, it should be, it should be, it should be. And so, we want our students to look for what's missing, but we also want them to begin to think about what it's going to take to have that no, no longer be an issue for them. They can actually, we, we will be giving awards, and those will be given at the celebration. Our intention here tonight is to really encourage you to encourage participation at all levels. You know, our youngest kids can draw pictures, and they're amazing at it, and we want to see them. We want to see what their mind has to say in color on a piece of paper about what's possible and what's missing and what's been accomplished. So, I'm, I'm here tonight with my colleagues on the commission to really ask you for your active participation and support for this project. It is needed in our community for us to, to develop our commitment to diversity and to expand it in as many ways as we can, and we on the commission are really committed to accomplishing that this year. So, thank you.
What's the timeframe of that competition?
The competition, they want, the competition will, you'll be getting the letter probably within the next 10 days, and the deadline will be January, the first part of January. It'll be about a week before the event. You need about 10 days, week to 10 days. So, it'll be, there's plenty of time. That's why we're here tonight, is so that it's not a last-minute thing. We really want people to begin to engage and to look, to look around the community. We're actually also thinking of, of, of expanding this conversation to the community at large and asking some of those, like me, who's been around since way before the 60s, to look and see what, from our eyes, what's different, what works, what doesn't work, what do we still see are the gaps, and have the community begin to get engaged in this and write our letters to Martin Luther King also. So, we're, we're really committed that this conversation become a community conversation this year.
Thank you, Sharon. Jeremy Kirkley.
If you all don't mind, I have a very long voice, so I'm going to separate from my camera. It's just a little turny.
Well, the only problem with that is that we record this and we, we broadcast it, so they probably need, they probably need to hear you.
No problem, sir.
Okay.
I know it's been a long day for everybody, so I'm just going to read what I wrote, hopefully in short speech to the point, and y'all can understand where I'm coming from. So, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, schools, staff, and parents, probably doing one here. Let it be known that the topics that I bring forth can be very controversial. I come to, I come to you tonight with the topic of critical race theory and approved reading. Before I get to these two topics, let me bring you up to speed as to why I'm here. My student came to me with the issue of doing a report for their enriched English class and stated that they were in fear of completing this assignment because they felt that their view, views might not match up with their peers in the class, that they would be chastised and possibly beaten up after school, exact words. As a parent, that concerns me. So, I dug a little deeper into the topic as to why they might think this way. As a concerned parent, I took on the responsibility of reading this book that was assigned to my child. Right, right here, there's about 50 to 100 copies in the Enid Public Schools' library at Enid High. The book is entitled, or excuse me, titled Dear Martin, and it is authored by Nick Stone. Now, before I get into the details of this book, let me state a couple of facts. Number one, this book was written on a fourth to fifth grade reading level, I've done my homework, and was assigned to my junior and 11th grader. Number two, this book is not on any of the national reading assignments, again, I've done my homework, for any grade of education. Now, let's get to the meat and potatoes of this topic. As a father, I am utterly disgusted and enraged that this book was assigned to my child. Within the first four chapters of this book, I read the words, and I'm going to break your policy, sir, I do apologize. It's all in this text. [bleep]. 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 And yes, of course, the $5 word, mother of all words, [bleep]. In no way, shape, or form is this language appropriate for a teenager in high school to be saying, writing, or reading. My children and I, sure, and I'm sure that many others in this room, unfortunately, there's not a crowd here tonight, are not permitted to speak with such foul filth. Have I used these words? Yes, I have. I'm no good prick. Have I used these words in front of my children? Again, yes, I have. And to note, I am also a 40-year-old man that has seen combat four times in two different countries, so I feel that I have earned the right to use those choice words on occasion. However, my children do not, and they do know that. Now, let's talk about the context of this book. This book was written so that it depicts white versus black, black versus white, along with youth being slain by cops and vice versa, not to mention that it also went on to promote gang and gang violence at one point, also to note the sexual innuendos where the main character's friend mentions to the main character that his girlfriend, just the other day, had her hand wrist deep down another man's pants. Now, I ask you, is that appropriate? I don't think so. Let's move on to the critical race, race theory. Definition of critical race theory is a body of legal scholarship and an academic movement of the U.S. civil rights scholars and activists who seek to critically examine the intersection of race and U.S. law and to challenge mainstream American liberal approaches to rape, racial justice, my source Wikipedia. Why are teachers not using the national reading list to assign appropriate readings? What happened to teaching the curriculum? What happened to the readings of the past? I have a few here. The Color Purple, Roots, To Kill a Mockingbird, that was one of my favorites, The Great Gatsby, and of course, the all-time classic, The Diary of Anne Frank. Now, I'm not saying that racism, and excuse me, I may get a little emotional right here. Now, I'm not saying that racism does not exist. To say such a thing would be absurd. We all know that. However, if this is something that must be talked about and taught within the walls of our schools, then what happened to American history? What happened to world history? What happened to the simple cities class? I think it's time to bring them all back. I feel that if this topic is to still be taught in the schools, then teach it. And teach the real history of it, not this watered-down version that we have today because we're afraid that some of these feelings are going to get hurt. Excuse me, I lost my place. Let's teach true history of slavery and not just the white versus black slavery. Let's teach on how all nations and all people of all colors were at one point in their lineage as slaves. That's a fact. My bloodline runs deep, as it consists of Irish, Scottish, Cherokee, and Creek Indian. I could stand up here all night and preach upon the Irish slavery and how bad the American Indians had it. Yes, those were my ancestors, but that's in the past, and that's where I'm going to leave. Yes, this is a very controversial topic, and yes, it needs to be talked about, and yes, I am a firm believer that it needs to be taught. But it needs to be taught the right way, not with this garbage. In closing, and I appreciate your time, thank you for listening, teach these children history and where society went wrong, so that they may grow up to be the future, to change the way that things are today. Stop teaching and spreading hate. That's all this is. White on, white on black, black on white, cop versus kids, kids versus cops, gangs, it's garbage. It should not be allowed in our schools. By the way, government doesn't need your help, Bishop and Agent. Thank you. I have a meeting.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kirkley, I will just mention before you go that we do have a process in place for when, when parents or community members do disagree with a textbook or, or a teaching tool that's being used, there's a process for going through a grievance process on that to get something removed from the library, and so I would encourage you to go through that process.
Yes, sir. The Assistant Superintendent asked by human libraries, we spoke previously on different items.
Okay.
So, if you guys could, if, if would please give me that information, I would gladly follow up and pursue whatever I would.
Yeah, if you'll just follow up with Mr. Darrow, and he can kind of walk you through that process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please do.
Appreciate it.
Brings us to item three, superintendent's report.
All righty. Okay, got several things want to cover in superintendent's report today. The first one is really good news, that EPS is a recipient of a $40,000 Striving Readers mini-grant. It's actually an extension to what we have been doing in the past, this one specifically for some Solution Tree training at the high school, whereas in the past, I believe our Striving Readers grant is focused on elementary, and so thought I would ask Mr. Darrow, and Kristen, Kristen's not here, so Dudley's going to talk about that mini-grant.
Sure. First of all, this is an extension, as Dr. Floyd said, to our Striving Readers grant. The United States Department of Education donated some money to extend that. It was for $20,000 per school, so Mr. Liddell, Ms. Jones, and myself all worked on a grant, and we applied for it. I don't know how or why, but they went from $20,000 to giving us $40,000, so we're very happy about that, and we're going to use that money, just as Dr. Floyd said, towards Solution Tree and continue the PLC movement and the process at the high school. So, very fortunate, as I said, went from $20,000 up to $40,000, so win, win, win.
All right, thank you, Dudley. So, that'll, that'll be good, good for kids at the secondary level. Oh, second thing I want to mention is the EPS seventh and eighth graders will benefit from the new flight course, and we want to say thank you again to Vance Air Force Base and the money that kind of kick-started that program, Ready for Liftoff is the name of the program. So, again, thank you to Vance Air Force Base, and thought I would ask Mr. Darrow again to say a brief synopsis about this program.
Sure. Kitty Herbl really took the lead on this process to get it implemented at all three sites, Longfellow, Emerson, and Waller. And the second person that deserves a lot of credit is Colonel Higgins, who helped write the grant, is also working with Mrs. Herbl in the middle schools, so getting some guest speakers in and continuing the curriculum. And this is also embedded in our project Lead the Way classes, technology classes at the middle school. So, again, win, win, win at all three middle schools.
And kind of an extension to that is that just today, I finalized a meeting that we are going to host here in this room with the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, OAC, and they've asked to have an audience with Enid Public Schools and North Enid to introduce curriculum focused on aviation education, and we'll see what that entails. I think there are one or two districts in the state already have that in, in place, so I'm interested to see what they bring to us, but that may be an extension of what we're doing here in this Ready for Liftoff program at the middle school level and extend into the sec, to the high school level, so we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Next item is discounted internet service that is now available to EPS parents who qualify for the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. So, thought I would ask Dr. Robinson and/or Jeffrey Herbl to... Jeffrey Herbl to say a word about that. Jeff, you wanna step up to the mic in case they have any questions?
I'll kick us off just a little bit, and then Jeff can definitely answer some more questions. Basically, this is a discount on broadband internet and also on devices for our students and their families who qualify for free and reduced lunch program, so that's, that's really another reason to have as many people complete the application process as possible, because there, there's always, they're always changing that income level, and so it's, it's really important to get that in because that's how you qualify. And basically, all of our providers in Enid are participating in this program. There is one exception, Jeff and I checked the list before we came in here. Chisholm broadband is currently not on the list, but that's not to say they won't be added at some point in time, so parents, parents really can get that fifty dollar a month discount on a broadband internet at their house by qualifying and going through their internet provider, or if they don't have one, they can go to an internet provider and fill out, I believe most of them have an application, it's kinda what I was reading, and they'll require you to fill out, and then they qualify for that money for at least a year of discounted services.
Anything to add on that broadband?
Well, the real interesting thing, when it first came out this summer, it was for the pre, two previous years for free and reduced lunch, and they just updated that for anyone that qualifies for this year, so if you've had a hardship in qualifying this year as of today, so that's why it's important to make sure they get their free and reduced application turned in now, they do qualify for that, and the term of the benefit is six months after the pandemic is declared ended or the funds run out, but, so we're thinking at least the end of the school year, maybe into next school year, that this benefit will be available.
All right, and thank you, Jeff, and Dr. Robinson, while you're on that topic of free and reduced, would you like to say a word about the P E B T program? P E B T, that's the, the federal government checks that some free and reduced parents may start receiving soon, if in fact their child qualified for free and reduced during a virtual time period.
Yes, if, if parents, if parents and students qualified for free and reduced lunch last year, there is, there, there's a program out there where they're actually gonna be given a debit card, I believe, and not, not an actual check, but it's a debit card that will be mailed directly to the family. It's important that families are aware and don't throw it out with the junk mail, because the concern that I was given last Friday is it's gonna basically come in a white envelope, not a lot of directions to it, so somebody could think it is junk mail and just throw it out. When you really need to look at it, open it up, it's gonna have a debit card in there, and it's, I, I don't have any more information, what it's gonna look like, how, how the system's gonna play out, but those funds are, are really for families to use in whatever manner they see fit. They're, they're, part of the, what they're for is for learning, for food, that's really the intent of what they're out there for, but we, we've checked our records, our lists were all submitted correctly last year, from everything we can tell, so our families that qualified should be receiving those anytime, I believe they're supposed to be out within the next month, so anytime from today to the next month, those should be.
So we really don't have a part in it other than what we turned in last year based on the free and reduced applications that the parents turned in. So the reason I wanted to ask Sam to say a word about that is to reiterate how, even though students are eating free this year, free and reduced students are eating free this year, it is still extremely important for parents to go ahead and complete that free and reduced application this year, because that will be the, the free and reduced numbers that our district utilizes moving forward, even after the pandemic, so we would certainly encourage parents to go ahead and complete that, we really need them to do that. All right. Good news also on the Enid High School newspaper, Alex, we appreciate the Enid News and Eagle working with our high school on the Enid News and Eagle EHS page, which will be published in the paper the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, the Enid Plainsman Quill page, so they had their first edition in recently, and so appreciate the Enid News and Eagle working with us on that, and that's, that's a good experience for high school students to write articles and that type of thing, and good for our parents and community members to see the good things that are happening in our school district as well, so appreciate that effort. Want to say a word about the new student transfer law that takes effect in January, this coming January, two thousand twenty-two. We are waiting on the State Department of Education, based on the law that was passed by the legislature this past spring, the State Department of Education now has to provide guidance to the Oklahoma State School Board Association so that they can put together sample policies and then provide school districts with those sample policies that we then can present to you guys for approval prior to those new transfer laws taking effect this coming January, so as soon as we get those, we'll be submitting them to you and talking about it, we anticipate that that will come to us no later than November, we hope, but that's where that stands. Next up is each year we are required to report to our board the annual seven through twelve dropout report and annual college remediation for, for a previous school year, and this is always in arrears, so the report you have in front of you, this is it, isn't it Dudley? Right here, so board members, you have this one at your place, and this is for the nineteen twenty school year, and I, I'll ask Mr. Darrow to give us a brief report on this.
Okay, the first page, I just took some schools that are predominantly in our area, Garfield Grant, Kate County Noble, I just tried to break this down by our area, and I'm gonna go through this across the top line of Enid High School, so we had a hundred and thirty-six in two thousand nineteen that attended college after high school. Of the hundred and thirty-six, zero, zero needed remediation in science, twenty-six in English, thirty-nine in math, twenty-four in reading, for a grand total of forty-four students that entered college needed remediation. I would like to point out one interesting fact, and I, I mentioned this last year whenever I spoke about this, the zero in science is a little misleading, because OSU, NOC, Northwestern, they all used the reading portion for their remediation in science, so I really don't know if we have twenty-four kids that need reading remediation, or if it's twelve in science, twelve in reading. But again, that kinda gives you a pretty good comparison of how we do across Northwest Oklahoma, and the far top left corner I put on there that we graduated four hundred and eleven kids that year, so a hundred and thirty-six of those kids went to college, roughly about thirty-three percent, which is a pretty good turnout if you look nationally. The second page is our graduation report. I have nothing new to report to you, the State Department of Education is still behind on graduation report, so everything I have is from two thousand nineteen, that's the last official documentation that's been produced by the State Department. I will tell you a couple of facts and a couple of bullets at the bottom, and two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had a two percent, two percent dropout, which if we could somehow continue the two percent dropout for four years, that would put us in the nineties, which is where we'd love to be, obviously our high school goal is ninety-two percent. The four, forty-five students of the nineteen ninety-six were the ones that were considered dropout, that's where the two point one came from. On this past year, we had four hundred and forty-one students graduate with only two not completing their coursework, if we can get those two graduated by October one, they will be in our four-year cohort. Above, you see a four-year cohort, a five-year cohort, and a six-year cohort, so if we can get these last two, which the high school staff assured me today that they're still working with them and beating them up, trying to get them to cross the deadline by October one, they would still be considered a four-year report. The two biggest variables, I'll just tell you, are the, the students that drop out during the school year, obviously if a kid quits coming, we have to drop them and we have to track them down. The second variable that is very difficult to track are the kids that don't come back from summer. This past year, we had eleven students not return from summer break, we're currently working with our campus police officers that you saw tonight, along with Garfield County officials, on tracking these kiddos down, locating them, and making sure they're in school. So, lots of resources, I listed them down there, we're always looking to improve in this area, it's a very difficult area, but this is the most up-to-date information I have for you.
I did want to introduce Pam Schmidt, she's down here at the table with us where Carol usually sits, Carol went home ill today, and Pam is filling in on taking the minutes and everything for us tonight, so you'll make sure to reiterate the motions and the seconds for Pam tonight, I'd appreciate it on the action.
I screw up more than anybody, so sorry, in advance.
I did tell her to stop us if she needs to, but we appreciate Pam filling in tonight, and Pam is actually Dudley's secretary, and Pam has, I've already made the decision to move Pam into Carol's position when she retires in December, so this is a good experience for Pam, and we'll try to be gentle on you tonight and kinda ease you into it, but thanks for coming tonight, Pam. So, the reason I wanted to stop there and introduce her now is because on this report, we have to include that in the minutes and then send those minutes to our REO officer, so this will check that box, so appreciate Dudley providing that report to us. Did anybody have any questions on that report for Mr. Darrow?
And this actually probably is more Sam, maybe, maybe, he may know, on the truancy officer, just since I saw that, are we still using grant money on him? Or not? So it's still, remind me, I cannot.
We, we just pay him out of general fund.
General, okay.
Just like we do teachers and everybody else.
And is he tracking down, still down?
He's making home visits, yep.
Yep. Mr. Stogs is doing a good job for us.
Anybody else? All right, thank you Dudley, appreciate it. Next, I wanted to remind everybody that we, next month, in October, we will start back up with our Strategic Plan Committee Chair Reports, and we will start with our Facilities Report, and that'll be Dr. Robinson and myself and Mr. Garrison, and this award you see here between Matt and myself is a really nice award that Henson Construction won for being the general contractor on our competition gym and performing arts center at the high school, so wanted to display that, Brian Henson got one of those, ordered one of those for his office and then provided us with one as well, so we appreciate him doing that, and we, again, wanna say thank you to Henson Construction for doing just an outstanding job on that project, and it's nice to know that the General Contractors Association saw what a great job they did as well, so we'll be ready with that report in October, and then move on through the next several months after that with character development, assessment accountability, curriculum instruction, personnel, extracurricular opportunities, and community partnerships. Enrollment numbers, I'm happy to say that we are now at seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five, and that is two hundred and eighty-five students up from where we ended in May, so we ended May seventy-four ninety, and we're now at seventy-seven seventy-five, so moving in the right direction, and we are glad to be having, continuing with in-person instruction. Which leads me to item I in the superintendent's report, and I just wanted to touch on several things here, one is the, I wanted to rehash for everyone what we are currently doing on our COVID procedures for our school district, we are trusting parents to make the best choice for their students concerning masks, students and faculty and staff can choose to wear a mask or not, that's based on what the legislature passed last session. Number three, six students and employees in general, as has been the case in the past, can return to school after being fever-free for twenty-four hours, but if someone tests positive for COVID, they should stay home for ten days from the date of their positive COVID test. Elementary school students will, elementary schools will notify parents of that particular classroom if someone in that self-contained classroom has tested positive, but we will not notify the entire elementary campus. The reason we wanna notify the parents in that particular classroom is so that the parents then can monitor their students for any symptoms. And then, due to the fact that quarantining last year sent so many healthy students and employees home for extended periods of time, sometimes for numerous extended periods of times, we are not quarantining students or employees unless the Garfield County Health Department or the Oklahoma State Health Department requires us to do so. Campus secretaries are, and our nurses are helping to keep track of our positive cases and our exposures, and we are documenting that information, and Jane is helping us keep track of that, and we are, as required, sending that in via single sign-on to the State Department, so we are in compliance there. So, I wanted to basically just rehash that, because that's what we currently have in place. COVID testing options for Enid, our head nurses sent this out recently, just reminding everybody where they can go to get a COVID test, and I'm sure this is not, these are not the only places, but Garfield County Health Department, Express Wellness, Urgent Care Plus, Urgent Care North, Enid Live Well, and a number of other places in town, folks can go to get COVID tests. And then I wanted to mention that we are, in this room, we will conduct voluntary flu shots clinic for employees, and for those that have not gotten their COVID shots but still want to, they will be offered to those on a voluntary basis at that flu clinic as well, and we'll do that all here in this room, two times for employees of Enid Public Schools, one on October the twelfth, from seven to nine AM, and then three to six PM, and then a second time the following week on October the nineteenth, again, seven to nine AM or three to six PM, for employees on a voluntary basis for flu shots and COVID shots if they wanna take advantage of that. You probably saw in the news that students age five to eleven have now been approved for vaccines, but we don't have any guidance on that yet, so obviously that's a voluntary basis on their parents' end anyway, so all I, I know as much as you do on that and what I heard on the news, so I hadn't gotten any guidance any further on that, than that. Let's see, I did wanna mention that the School Board Association did send us guidance recently that public schools in Oklahoma are not subject to the regulations of the vaccine testing rules that the Biden administration sent out recently, and so that would not apply to school district employees, even though we do have more than a hundred employees. Let's see here. So, that brings me to item four on that item, and as I shared with the board over the last several months, we probably will have this on the agenda for the next foreseeable future to discuss, and then decide if we wanna take any action to approve the continuation of what we're doing on our COVID procedures, or make any changes or revisions to that. I personally think that what we currently have in place is working well, because we currently have less than one percent positive cases of our employees and less than one percent positive cases of our students. Matter of fact, we only have seven, as of today, we have seven positive cases of employees and sixty, sixty-seven? Sixty-three positive cases of students, so less than one percent on each of that, so I think our board and our school district has taken the right approach in trying to have in-person instructions, I think what we are doing is working, and I would certainly recommend that we continue doing that, but I do want to give anybody an opportunity to chime in on that item before we move on to the next. If we continue with what we're doing, we don't need to take any action, if we wanna make some changes, well then we would need to take some action. Anybody wanna chime in?
No, but would you like a motion for us to approve the current?
Uh, no, if we're just continuing, we don't need action, if we are making changes, well then we would need action. Everybody good with continuing?
Yep.
All right, no action needed then. Everybody good down there? Okay, good. Alrighty, thank you very much. Board training, so Carol surveyed all the board members, if you'll recall, we were going to try to bring the School Board Association in here to have board training, to where our board members could get some board training credit here at our place, and it's sometimes easier to bring a couple of trainers in here rather than all of us going to the city or somewhere else. So we looked at a couple of options, early October, late October, looked like all of our board members could attend a meeting five thirty to eight roughly on October the twenty-fifth, that is a Monday at the end of October, I think I made a typo on the first email that I sent you guys as a reminder, but it is October twenty-fifth, not September the twenty-fifth, so that's a Monday, and we will have dinner at five thirty here, and then Dr. Ann Kane and Dr. Joe Sciano from the School Board Association will be here to conduct our training, and I hope that we can have all of our board members present for that. So we got all that worked out, and I did confirm with them again today that they could come, and they are on go. So you guys will be able to knock out three hours of credit, required training credit that night, and then, after we got all that finalized, then... And then after we got all that finalized, then I discovered that at the bottom of one of the OSSBA emails, they had started to list the regional board trainings that they have had in the past, and we're in Region 3, and so this year's Region 3 training is going to be held in Covington, so that's pretty close for us. And just so happens that that happens on the Thursday night after the October 25th training that we'll hold here. And I know that's two trainings in one week, and it's not ideal, but it'll allow you to get six hours of training credit knocked out in one week. So the first one here is October the 25th. We'll feed you at 5:30, we'll start the training at 6:00 and hopefully be done by 8:00. Then on Thursday, October the 28th, we'll have one or two Suburbans ready to load up and head to Covington, and we'll plan on leaving from here at 4:45 p.m. Get over there and conduct that training roughly 5:30 to 8:30, but usually they'll probably try to get us out of there before 8:30. So does everybody feel like they can make both of those in the same week?
Yes.
You're not required to go to trainings, but you're certainly welcome to join us if you want to for one, both, or none, whatever you wish. All righty, good. I'm glad that we're able to get six hours of training out of the way for you guys on that. So sorry it's all happening on one week, but we can knock it out. And then the last item on my superintendent report is a reminder about board elections upcoming, and you have a summary sheet at your place that says EPS Board Election 2022. And this is kind of an odd year because we do have three of our current board members that just so happened, they come up for election and/or reelection this year. So Dr. Robinson kind of handles this, most of the paperwork on this, so I'll turn it over to him to say a word about board elections for 2022.
This is the first time I've done a summary sheet, but I think it'll really clear all the questions up because this is kind of the questions we get every year. The one, the one thing I want to bring to attention is the filing period is December 6 through 8. It's a very short filing period. Normally, we have four to five days. They've shortened it to three for some reason, and so please make sure anybody's filing that you get in there and get that done prior to the close of business on December 8. There is the primary and the general election, and the primaries, if you have three or more candidates running for that one open position, then there would be a primary election. If no one receives more than 50% of the vote in the primary, then there's a general election. So there's a possibility now of going through two elections to become a board member. So just kind of keep that in mind. And just to announce the offices, we have Office Four, which is Joe, Office Five, which is Matt, and then Office Number Seven is Chad, and Chad, yours is only up because you were appointed and have more than half of the remaining term to fill. And so bad news for you is you'll have to do this again in two years.
And just for clarification, Office Five is Matt Loman, not Matt Sampson.
That's right, Matt Loman, yes, sir. Okay, that's all I have. There's any questions?
And then if they file and have no opposition, well, they don't have to go through the primary election, and we don't have to go through the cost or expense of the election at all.
That's right. And that is now also being clarified on placing, an unopposed candidate is placed in April after the general election. We used to do it in February. We now have to wait until April to actually place that position. So just to be clear on everything.
So any questions from any of the board members, but especially Matt or Chad? Joe's not here. Any questions? All righty, thanks for putting that summary sheet together for us, Sam. That's helpful. And Mr. President, I believe that's the extent of my superintendent report this evening.
Thanks, sir. Brings us to item four, regular business. Items A1 through 11. Do I have a motion?
Move we approve.
Motion by Tori.
Second.
Second by Kyle. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Brings us to item 4B, discussion on possible action to approve the district's financial report for August 2021. Dr. Robinson.
This month's financial report is, as it has been for the last few years, collections are looking good, but I want to bring attention to the general fund in this one. We have actually collected $1.3 million more than we did through August last year, and part of that is our textbook allocation from the state. They're now paying that upfront, and that was not quite doubled for us, but it went from about $350,000 to about $620,000. So we were given that money upfront in the years past. It had been given to, when they reinstated it, it was given to us on a 12-month allotment. So it's really good because guess when you need textbooks and those kind of things, you need them at the beginning of the year, not to pay them off as you go throughout the course of the school year. So there's 300 of that. And then our SRT2 funds that we spent in last fiscal year, we were reimbursed for. About $500,000 of that actually came into us in August. And so right there's 800,000 of that, 1.3 million. So really, to be $500,000 collected more than we were last year is good news for the school district, and revenues are looking really good. One of the things on expenditures that I just kind of want to talk about is if you're looking at expenditures real closely, you might see some line items that are a little different, and that's because we're doing a lot of one-time purchases with a lot of our one-time money. The problem with some of these purchases are that where you might see them as a board, and then you actually won't see that happen for maybe three, four, or six months down the road because the COVID issue has really hit us on a lot of things we're buying. And so I just, I want to, like I said in the last meeting, just be aware of that. We're making those encumbrances, and if you don't see those things come through, it's probably a holdup on the supply end of it, not really on, not really anybody's fault is just how things are right now, as you guys are well aware. So anyways, things are looking really good, and we're just pushing forward, and thanks to Dudley on giving us some extra money. Counselor Core, a little extra on striving readers, so it's really good. Just need a motion to approve unless there's any questions.
Move we approve.
Motion by Tori, second by Matt. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 4C, discussion on possible action to approve the district's annual estimate of needs for fiscal year 2022. Dr. Robinson.
The estimate of needs is our official state budget, and I want to kind of give you guys a little bit of story on this because last Friday I had a meeting with several other CFOs, and there is another way you can do this. You can do it through the Budget Act is what it's called, and we can actually set our whole budget in the summer, but they've really made some changes to this. So if you guys are ever in any trainings and hear about the Budget Act, I'm going to say, please don't come talk to me about changing from estimate of needs to the Budget Act because they've made that problematic for some of those schools that have done that, and it has to do with carryover funds for some reason. And I really don't know all the details on it. They were just really complaining, and they basically said they're going to be switching back to estimate of needs because of what the state's doing to them on the Budget Act. So with that being said, the estimate of needs is our actual budget for the school year. It's going to set our appropriation and our allocation that we can spend. This gets sent to the county exercise board, which sets our county mills on our bond issuance. It also goes to the State Department, and it says this is what Enid Public Schools' maximum spend allowance is for this school year. So I'm going to run through this really quickly. The general fund will be appropriated $77,871,108.40. The building fund is going to be $4,280,249.57. And our sinking fund, which is our bond repayment, and this is where the mills can adjust, is And our millage adjustment looks like it's going to drop slightly. I'm not going to say it's anything to get real excited about that you're going to have extra money on your tax bill, but it is going down by about .3 percentage points. So any reduction in millage to me is good news, even if it's, even if it's small. So anyways, this is just our basic budget for the year, needs your approval so we can continue spending, and then I will present to you guys an actual budget come January on where we're really sitting at for the school year.
Do I have a motion?
Move we approve.
Motion by Tori.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 4D, discussion on possible action to approve the EPS lease agreement with the Enid Police Department for leasing of 12 portable breath testing units purchased out of the Lori Mitchell Boland Memorial Drunk Driver Scholarship at the request of Mr. Boland.
This is kind of a unique situation to Enid. I really don't know any other school districts that have this. I'm sure it exists, but Mr. Boland has set up a fund within Enid Public Schools in memory of his daughter who was killed by a drunk driver several years ago. Those funds are pretty, there are funds to control as a school district, but Mr. Boland has directed those funds as to where he wants them spent in the prevention and of drunk driving, and to keep drunk drivers off the road has essentially been the goal of those funds. In the years past, we've done things such as rides home New Year's Eve kind of thing. Last year, we did a publication in the newspaper about not driving drunk, making good decisions around the holiday season. And this year, Mr. Boland, he's, and those costs are pretty minimal for the $10,000 that we have in the account. This year, Mr. Boland really wanted to do something different. He wanted to buy the breathalyzers for our police officers, or a portable breathalyzer in prevention of drunk driving. And so in order, in order for the school district to really be able to buy something for the city, we have to do a memorandum of understanding. We already have several shared services with them, so Mr. Boland's, the family's money that's been set aside is being used to pay for these breathalyzers. We're not taking anything away from our students, from state dollars. This is really in the gift account, and the city, the city actually was in, was in the process of getting these breathalyzers. They're the ones who picked them out, kind of went through that, and so they were definitely going to be used by the city. And so it's really, we're just going to continue those services, kind of an MOU with them. Once we turn them over, we have no liability on the breathalyzers, as we wrote in MOU, because I don't want the board to be going to court if somebody is found to be drunk with one of our breathalyzers that we're turning over to the city.
Dr. Robinson, just to clarify, these are going to be in the possession of City of Enid Police Officers, not Enid Public Schools Officers.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And there is a possibility that we could use those for things such as prom and other events we have, but right now it's turned over to the city, checked out, just like they do with their cameras that they use, other things they check out when they go on patrol. So I think, I think it's a good use of the funds, and there's, I would have no hesitation in approving this as a board member. So I'll leave it up to you guys if there's any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Mr. Boland's request.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Kyle. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
That is very generous of that family to do, and certainly we are sorry for their loss, but glad that they are generous enough to donate some money that's hopefully going to prevent tragedy like that in the, in the future.
That's right. Brings us to item five, new business.
I failed to mention that I placed some stickers at board members' places, suitable for placing on your vehicle. I don't know if you've already got some on there or not, but gave each of you one of those, and I've got a few more here if you need them or want them. And then we'll make sure that our absent board members get those as well.
No new business?
No, sir.
All right. Item six, reports. Colonel Mueller.
Only really one thing to bring up from the base this week. In case somebody didn't know, this past weekend, we celebrated two significant dates on the base. First, of importance to everybody around here, we celebrated the 80th anniversary of Vance Air Force Base and the close partnership, of course, we have with the City of Enid that goes back that far. And in addition to that, we celebrated the 74th birthday of the United States Air Force. So Friday night, we had a little shindig out at Woodring, and then we had a couple of celebrations on the base over the weekend, but all that culminated with us actually naming the wing commander's airplane the City of Enid.
Wow.
Which is a tradition that goes back to, back in the 50s, we had a couple of aircraft named the City of Enid, and that fell by the wayside for a bit. So should any of you find yourself out at the airbase and it doesn't happen to be flying, training a pilot at the time, I'd be happy to show it to you.
Wow, that's cool.
So barring any questions, that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Board comments? Hearing none. Brings us to item seven. Next regular business meeting will be on October 18th here in the administrative building at 6:00 p.m. Item eight, discussion on possible action to approve a proposed executive session to discuss the proposed termination of Angela Green. Employment of those individuals or positions listed on the attached Exhibit A, the purchase or appraisal of real property, or any pending litigation. Do I have a motion? Motion by Tori.
Second.
Second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session.